Call the order of the City Council meeting for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 21st, 2017. It's now five o'clock. Will the City Clerk please call the rule?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pachowinski.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does the term court please stand for the Fledges' Allegiance?
Fledges' Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council jennings appropriate. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come up to vote him to do so at this time. See, there's none. Approval of minutes for the November 7th regular meeting and November 14th work session. Move. By Riappell, second by Demers. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Scheduled bed lightings are non-scheduled public hearings. Public hearing, consider selling a portion of parcel 83.04459.00, which totals approximately 6,000 square feet at proposed selling price of 75 cents per square foot. Motion to open public hearing.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Pachowinski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Murphy, since Mr. Gordy is not available.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Gordy wanted me to convey that he is very sorry that he could not make it tonight, however, he did have a family emergency that he did have to attend to. So, I will take over the best as I can. This item has been brought aboard before the City Council for discussion and has been through the planning, excuse me, the EDA number of occasions as well. Joining property owner would like to buy that 6,000 square feet to use as additional land for better movement, that type of thing in his property. So, with that, the EDA has made a recommendation of 75 cents per square foot sale price with a rebate of 25 cents per square foot upon presentation of receipts for the landscaping that would take place along Highway 2. Blanket utility easement, the buyer pays the engineering fees and attorney's fees associated with the land division and sale. The buyer pays for the repairs, any repairs that may be needed for utility work on the property, in that no permanent structures would be allowed on that site, but the site may be paved or fenced with proper permits. So, that is the staff report.
Anybody have any questions for the public hearing? I see none. None more of them. Motion to close public hearing?
Move.
Second by Grassel, second by Pachowinski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now closed. Move on to consent agenda. Items under consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Any member like items four through eight polled at all for discussion? See none, entertain a motion four through eight.
Move on four through eight.
Move by Mr. Demers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Riappell. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledge receipt of reports and officers, boards and commissions, regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power and Building Commission for October 19th, 2017, and November 2nd, 2017. Regular meeting minutes of the Cemetery Commission, July 26th, 2017. Communication, there's none. Hold business, consider adopting ordinance number 22, fourth series amending city code title Business Regulations, Chapter 110, entitled General Business Licensing and Regulations by adding Section 110.36, entitled Garage or Room Sale, and by adopting by reference code, Chapter 10, General Provisions, and Section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions, second reading.
Move.
By Vedder.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grassel. Roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. New business, consider approving the request for an extension considering a special use permit to allow time for an independent radio frequency study to be completely determined where cell towers are needed within the city of East Grand Forks.
Move.
By Vedder.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, have we heard anything from the applicant since our last meeting?
Tell us.
Which applicant? I heard from both.
The person that's applying for the special use permit? The golf course?
For the valley golf course, I was contacted by Jeff and asked which way we were headed with it, because he was out of town and he had asked a board member to attend the meeting and had not heard from them. And I stated that at this point in time, we were looking for an independent study, and he said, "Please keep him posted," as he would be out of town again tonight, so.
I guess there's some indication that there was communication between someone saying that they were no longer pursuing this, or that's, there's no indication from this.
I have not received any sort of request from anyone that they were pulling it.
I guess my, the reason I ask is because if we decide to do this, but there's no interest from the applicant, it seems like we're wasting people's time and wanting to do it.
Eddie Buell was aware of it. He had no issues with it. So, the frequency study, he would prefer that, you know, if his options were to deny it or do the study, obviously, he was in favor of the study, so.
And who is he from?
He's with Verizon Wireless.
Just want to make sure that he's.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Demers?
No.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? See none? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'd just like to make a comment. People probably don't understand what we're doing today. Personally, I'm very much against it, most of the council is, if not all of it. What we're going to do with this resolution is to take and settle the issue. Clearly, we'll have our own engineers in regard to this particular situation, so it takes care of the future. Am I correct, Mr. President?
The third party is not our engineers, but it's third party, independent. So, anybody else have anything? Not one move on? Thank you. Consider authorizing the CDB's Grand Forks Police Department to begin fundraising efforts and attempt to cover all startup and first year expenses for a K-9 program. I'll let everybody note that Chief Hedlin was in court and just was dismissed from court, and he's on his way back, but he said that if we have some questions, we can table it, or if we want to go ahead, we can. So, it is up to the council's wishes what they want to do. Hang on a second, Henry.
May I make a?
Henry, just hang on a second.
Pardon?
So, I guess it's up to, if you guys want to make a motion, go make a motion. If not, tell me what you want to do.
I don't have any questions. I'm opposed to it, and I'm going to vote no, but if you prefer waiting for the chief to get here, then.
I'd like to.
Henry, hang on a second, please. I'm waiting for either a motion or a direction from the council.
Before there's a vote on it, I'd like to make some comments.
Henry, no one's made a motion yet, so.
Oh, I thought you were moving on.
No.
Okay. I'll wait for it.
If you want, we can table it to the next.
Is he expected back tonight?
Yes.
But not probably.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion and we approve it.
Okay. Mr. Tweetin has a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Grassel seconds. In the discussion, Mr. Tweetin.
I'm 100% for this particular project. I've tried drug cases, I'm very familiar with them, I've had that opportunity. One of the things that we must remember is that we've got the entire landscape of northwestern Minnesota permeated with drug, drugs of all different kinds. We have marijuana, we have meth, we have a lot of others, cocaine, and so forth. What'll happen if you get this dog? This dog will, will take and be around for nine or 10 years. If you don't do something about it, it's going to get worse. Now, the police officers up in northern Minnesota support this 100%. One of the problems we have, we have a lack of density and sizes of communities up north. But what's happening is that the drug people are coming in here in droves because we're near two major highways, 29 and Number 2. And the expense of taking care of people who get involved in drugs is going to be very, very great. It's going to be very expensive for the taxpayers. Now, if you want to save lives, you want to save monies, you'll go further into this to do what I'm saying. And the hope and expectation is that there'll be more of it done. Grand Forks, I understand, has one, but there are very few other communities have, and because of population. But one of the things you have to understand, we've got a very, very good workforce, task workforce, working drugs all the time. And the problem is, it's a sleeper, a lot of people don't understand it. But it's one thing for people to start drinking a little whoopee butt juice, but the thing is, when you get into drugs, it's entirely something different. And if you want to take and solve the problem, you put these people in prison. I'll stop there.
Mayor Gander.
I can speak in favor of going ahead with the fundraising to see if a K-9 division or a dog would be an appropriate addition to our police force. I've spoken with the chief about this, and he feels this would be a tool that would help them do their job better, and a tool that they do not have access to. It was half of the time or so, is what he shared with us, when they could have used a dog that they could borrow from another jurisdiction. So, about half the time where a dog would be helpful, one is not available for them. And so, I defer to the judgment of the chief, and if he feels this is an essential or very important part in him doing his job inside of that department, I would say I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. I am also in favor of this, to look at what efforts they can put forth to do the fundraising. I think it's a good asset that they could add on to the police force, so. Anybody else has any comments or questions? Mr. Pachowinski.
I believe that K-9 police unit would, would have a use. I, I just don't believe that East Grand Forks should shoulder the burden of it alone. I, we have a drug task force, we're partners with other agencies, including the county sheriff and police department in Crookston, neither of which has shown an interest in doing this. So, my concern is, is that, yeah, they're going to raise funds for the upfront cost, but annually, there will be, there will be in a cost which, which the chief has addressed, and I believe will be called upon to have our dog assist when, when it's needed in the county and in neighboring cities, and we'll, yeah, I'm sure they'll pay for the use of it, but I just don't, and I also don't think it's necessary. I believe it's, it's a solution in search of a problem, and in a time when we have asked all of our departments to find ways to find savings and work efficiently, we're expanding the mission. I believe it's mission creep, and that, given, given that and the lack of interest with our neighbors, that I'm not going to support this. Appears that there's enough support for it to pass, and if it does, I'll absolutely get behind the will of council, but my vote will be no.
Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'd like to say that we, we just, or we're in the process of our budget, kind of the final stages, and we've, we've all kind of mentioned that it's a tight budget, and we're looking at every, every dime and trying to constrain things, and personnel is the biggest driver of our budget. Now, obviously, a dog doesn't come with health insurance and all those, but it, it's in some sense, another employee of the, of the city of East Grand Forks. Yes, you can, you can go out and raise money for it in the front end, but if you're talking about a nine-year lifespan of a dog, you're going to be asking for two more cars by the time that that's done? I mean, that's the biggest cost of this, is another car. So, we're going to have a whole nother squad out there. Talking about additional overtime, yes, we may be going to other places, but that takes another personnel. You got to backfill that position to maintain our stuff. And all of this for what the, what the chief said in our last meeting is not a top priority of the department. He, I asked him flat out, "Is this your top priority?" And he said, "No, this isn't." So, it's a want more than a need. I believe, and on the fundraising thing, I do have somewhat of a problem with that, because, yes, you can maybe try to find some outside grants, but if you're going to the businesses and the people of, of this city, it's kind of an end around, around our budget. You know, then everybody goes out and takes, we already hear, yes, your taxes are too high. Well, this is, even if it's called fundraising and it's voluntary, it dips into that same pool of cash, you know, and next thing, we're going to go and this group is going to do it, and it creates a quasi-budgeting outside of what this council should be doing. So, I have a problem with that aspect, unless there's already a grant out there from the state or whatever that, that's targeted. I, I don't want, I don't want it to be every department for themselves, where anything that we want, we got to go and fundraise for. So, I have, I don't like that either. As I said in, in the work session, I have strong doubts about the effectiveness of a dog in the, in curbing a drug problem. I think it, there, it's gray at best as far as the, the ethics of using dogs to go around and, yes, reasonable suspicion is, is required, but most cops will tell you that reasonable suspicion is pretty easy to get. I mean, most of us drive around with reasonable suspicion, so it's, and not, I don't want to say that it is a guaranteed thing that will, will be misused, but it's, it's a very easily misused tool. And I, frankly, I think if you spent 50,000 to 80,000 dollars with Ms. Rightmeyer down in Polk County, you're going to get more bang for your buck on curbing our, our drug problem here than adding more police. I, I just don't see that as, as what, as the proper way to attack the problem that we have. I don't think adding more police is, is going to, in Henry's words, solve the problem. I think if, I don't think we can spend enough to solve the problem. So, I guess I'm not going to vote for this, because I, like I said, it's spending money on something that seems like it's the coolest new toy that we can get, and I don't see any real benefit to it, so, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Grassel.
I'm going to vote yes on this, just due to the fact that when you work with kids and you, you see those kids, and I firmly believe that that dog can be much more effective than what, what we're thinking. And I believe that drug problem is way bigger in East Grand Forks than we can even imagine. And I think that this is just another opportunity for us to stop what's going on in East Grand Forks that we don't even, that we don't even know about. And I think it's important, not only for kids, but for everybody in our community. And our, we talk about our community getting, getting bigger, that we want our community to be great, we don't want our community to be known as a certain stigma that we have in our community. I, I just think it's important, I think that, that, that dog can be used for lots of things, for education, for, it could go a long way. So, therefore, I'm, I'm totally for it.
Mr. Tweetin.
May I make one more comment?
Yep.
And one of the things that the general population probably doesn't understand, at the present time, the council and the school district are sharing one personnel to keep drugs out of the schools. We also take care of Sacred Heart. So, there already is a problem, and the thing is, that all, this resolution says, "Give the chief of police a try. Let him try." And that's going to probably happen tomorrow. You'll get a second vote on it, but I think you're, the biggest problem is that most people don't understand what a dog does. They're used for other purposes, too. I don't want to get into a litany of all the things they do. They take and they also are used for burglary cases. Burglaries are increasing all over Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. It, it's used for purposes of assault. And what happens is that this dog picks up the marijuana smell, and the dog takes, and nine times out of 10, if they can smell marijuana, there's meth or another more serious drug. That's the issue. Give our chief of police a try. He's a very intelligent man, and he knows what he's talking about. We've got an excellent police department. Here he comes right now.
Anything else, Mr. Tweetin?
I, no other comments, but maybe you should.
Chief Hedlin, if you want to come up, run if you have any comments on that. Do you came at the right time, or discussing?
I do apologize for being late. I was at Court in Crookston, got here as quickly as I could. I guess I'm not sure what, what the introductory comments were. Hopefully, folks did get the additional information I had regarding the ongoing expenses for this program. Also, I did make contact with both Crookston and Polk County as far as any possible partnerships at this point in time. Neither of them is able or interested to be, to take part and assist in that program. It is very difficult to do that as a multi-agency with, with a single dog like that, just because how do you determine who's going to pay for what? You know, is, does somebody automatically get a certain amount, number of calls without any, you know, any payment or anything like that? It's just, it's kind of difficult, so I can understand the reluctance to, to do so. As you probably saw, roughly 15,000 dollars in estimated ongoing expenses per year. If council would, would like, we would be more than happy to build that in, in whatever number of years you would wish, as part of our original fundraising goal, before I would request for the program to be formally approved.
Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. If Crookston, Polk, the Polk County Sheriff's Office, Drug Task Force, any of these requests the, the K-9 unit, is there a reimbursement, or is that just?
As we discussed this, some at a department head meeting yesterday, as Mr. Murphy said, some agencies will seek reimbursement, some don't. I guess it would be my request that we not, over the simple fact that we have, have never been asked to reimburse another agency when we have, when we have used their dogs.
I guess it seems odd, because Polk County doesn't want to do it. They, they've had it, right? Or, and Crookston's had it, but they're not redoing it.
I don't know if Crookston's had one or not.
So, potentially because of mutual aid or whatever, we would be footing some of that bill.
That's probably true. But when Crookston did have a dog, we did use that dog, and to the best of my knowledge, we were never required to pay them. We've used Grand Forks' dog repeatedly, and we've never been asked to pay for that.
If someone were to go get a request to go to Crookston or something, would you have to pull another officer in because of mandatory minimums, or?
All depends on the situation. If it's possible the officer would be off duty, since they, you know, three quarters of the time roughly they are, so it's very possible they would be off duty. If they were on duty, it would all depend on the staffing. If, if the K-9 officer was working a day shift and it was Monday through Friday, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't call in another officer, because between myself, our investigators, secretaries that could take over as dispatcher, we would be able to cover it during the daytime. If they were working at night, it would all depend on if we were minimum staffing or below minimum, you know? If, if that were causes to go below, we would call somebody, yes.
And then that 15,000 dollar number didn't include depreciation on the vehicle, right? So, it doesn't, you would actually have to budget another 6,000 dollars a year to pay for that in year five, and then 10, or wherever.
Well, somewhere out, yeah, I guess we, for our regular squad cars, we typically have been trying to replace them every three years. I would certainly like to think we could get six or more years out of this vehicle, because it's going to dramatically last miles. I could even see it getting, hard to say, but I could see it getting, getting six to eight years out of this particular patrol vehicle, which is going to be the majority of the life, useful working life expectancy for a dog.
That's it, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Chief Hedlin?
Thank you for consideration.
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Golstead, sir.
The only thing that I would like to do is just, I know this is a policy decision, so whether it's a vote of for or against, I'd just like to address, the K-9 program would give Chief Hedling another tool in his, in his tool chest, but any of the ethical issues that are being considered or even thought of, I, you know, there's always the ability to abuse, but our police force is, is of the highest standard, and I don't believe that this K-9 program would be used unethically in any manner.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments at this time? See none, roll call, please.
Vedder.
No.
Pachowinski.
No.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
No.
Motion is carried. Number 14, consider adopting resolution number 17-11-93, approve the hiring of Dave Fenton as an equipment operator, grade 10, step 7, for a salary of 22 dollars and 34 cents per hour.
Move.
Second. By Grassel, second by Demers. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider approving the Berra Law Purchase Agreement between the CDB's Grand Forks and Bucys, Inc., for the purchase of east 40 feet of parcel 83.04459.00 for 75 cents per square foot.
Move.
By Pachowinski.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Buckaloo, I'm happy to see that you're interested in this parcel. However, in all the discussions that I've had, the rebate has never come up, and therefore I need to vote no on this. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Vedder.
No.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 17, consider approving the contract between the CDB's Grand Forks and David Drawn Associates for the completion of the compensation study for a total of 20,000, 25,400.
Move.
By Vedder.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Buckaloo, I'm happy to see that you're interested in this parcel. However, in all the discussions that I've had, the rebate has never come up, and therefore I need to vote no on this.
for a total of twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand four hundred. Move. Move by Vedder.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the quote, it talks about the sixty-eight positions, and if there's a need to, to rewrite the job description, that it would cost basically eleven thousand nine hundred to do that, divided by the sixty-eight. I forgot what that number was. Is that a given, or is that, I'm just wondering, is that eleven thousand number that they have penciled in, is that?
Okay, you, actually, when you look at, you're talking about the wage analysis survey, the second item in the, in the column there, is that the weeks two to nine? This is, we will complete the wage analysis for all positions, but on the notes, it says if we have to rewrite job descriptions, it would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars per position. So that's if it would be found that the positions were lacking or not representative of what the, the jobs were, they would need to be re, and they would need to be rewritten, they would assist with that, and that would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars per position extra.
So that eleven thousand nine hundred isn't considered in that total?
No, the eleven thousand nine hundred is considered in that total.
And so it's another eleven thousand nine hundred that we could be on the hook for?
No.
Well, if they rewrite every six, all sixty-eight, that's one six, or sixty-eight times one seven, seventy-five is eleven thousand nine hundred.
No, I guess what they're saying is if they would be deficient, they would need to do that. However, I do not see that being a problem, due to the fact that we have redone most of our position descriptions since the last, the last analysis that we have. I'm fairly confident that the position descriptions that we do have are accurately represented in what the workers are actually doing. I don't, I don't see us really having to do any additional.
And does a change of a word constitute a rewrite, or what?
No, a rewrite would be if it's.
I'm just saying, if, if I want another eleven thousand nine hundred, I could change a word in every.
I think the eleven thousand nine hundred is included in the quote, and then if they have to rewrite, there's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per.
Right. And if you did sixty-eight, that's eleven thousand nine hundred, that's another eleven thousand nine hundred.
I guess I would be, well, according to our contrary, they, they would not do that without our approval, and I would be hard pressed, they would have to make a case to why they would need to rewrite that, because I said, I, we've, we've gone through really all of our positions in the city, and I'm pretty confident that our positions are accurate. So they would have to ask us, number one, prior to them doing that, it wouldn't be something that they could just go ahead and do and then charge us a hundred and seventy-five dollars per, per description afterwards. We'd have, they'd have to get our, our okay prior to doing that. And I would think it would be a hard sell for me, like I said, because I'm, I'm very confident with our positions.
Okay, and then the sixty-eight positions, those are all East Grand Forks City positions, correct?
Yes, this does not include Water and Light.
So when we, when we do pay equity, we have to report with Water and Light. So how, in the past, we've done all of our, our wage analysis in total, so that when we adjust the, the, the levels or the scales, they adjust so that they're all within pay equity compliance. So does this, if we just do this, and then Water and Light doesn't, or they go with another, they stay with Springstead, are we opening ourselves up to pay equity issues?
No, because we have made the motion, and we're putting it forward, that we were, we are separating ourselves from Water and Light, because if we did a pay, in my opinion, from what I've seen, if we did a pay equity comparison between Water and Light and City right now, we would not pass.
We have the ability to separate those? Because I thought that was determined.
We, we do have the ability to separate with those.
We tried to do that before, and they said, no.
And the reason, and the reason why I've been told is why we do that is because we do not have control over their union negotiations.
But we have control over the budget.
We have control over their budget, but we do not have control over their union negotiations and the, the setting of their, of their wages over there. We don't have final authority on that.
Mr. Gullston.
Just to address that, that was just brought to my attention again by Mr. Mickleseth. I have had a couple of discussions with Mr. Murphy. We are in the process of submitting a proposed resolution to the state of Minnesota to separate the, the pay equity reporting. The reason for it is primarily that the, the budget truly is controlled by the Water and Light Department. It has never been modified at any given time by the water, by the city council. And then it's a little bit different in the fact that all of the budgetary matters that you're dealing with are controlled by Water and Light. Wages, sal, you know, all the wages, they hire, they fire, they control their own wage benefits. And so we were putting that together, is it, is it a hundred percent that it's gonna be approved? No, that's a decision that's gonna be made by the state, but as a, at a request by both Water and Light and the city, if approved by this board.
Well, I guess past practice has shown that the city is in charge of their negotiations. We defer to some extent until they decide not to do what we want them to. In the past, the City of East Grand Forks has had council members that do the negotiations for that, that bargaining unit, and I guess I would reserve the right to do it again if we felt that those negotiations didn't go the way we should. So I guess, I don't know. I, I don't have a problem with this outfit, I just don't want us to get down the road and say, no, you can't sever, and now we have two different scales happening that now we have a pay equity issue. Is, that's the, like I said, I don't have a problem with these guys, they seem like they're on time and doing what they do, but that's my concern, is that.
But I guess I would say we would, in my opinion, we would have an issue right now, no matter what, just due to the fact that, there's, there's several factors why their, their pay scale is different than ours, and I, in my personal opinion, knowing what I know and what I've seen in these type of things, I think it's different enough that we would have an issue with that. So whether we go with a different company or not.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pakchavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
I don't know.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
Can we pay claims?
Oh, sorry. Well, if you want that.
Cotton.
You wanna get paid, please. Sorry. Consider authorized city minister, clerk, treasurer, to issue payments or recommend bills, bills and payroll. Move. Move by Grassl, second by Demers. Roll call, please.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pakchavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. My defense, it wasn't in red, so I didn't see.
I see that, my fault, sorry.
Mayor Gander.
If we look a little different up here tonight, it could be because we're enjoying the afterglow of a meeting we had yesterday. We all met at a sewage lift station out by our sewage ponds to celebrate the opening of the flow into Grand Forks, as was worked on and has been worked on for, it sounds like, close to a decade in the making. And it's a big deal. It's a big deal, because it's big savings for us. It's also reflective of, of the trust and the partnership that has formed between Grand Forks and here over these years. And I'm sure others will have something to say about it, because it was, it was quite a gathering. So Mayor Brown was there, lots of folks from the, the city, both sides, lots of our public works folks were there to show how it works, and it was nice. Last Thursday night, I had the opportunity to speak to a group of about four hundred farmers through the Chamber of Commerce, the Agriculture Farmer Appreciation Banquet at the Ramadien. It was a good chance for me to consider how important agriculture is to our community. It means so much to us economically and in every way that these farmers are successful. We're partners with them in fire protection and in plenty of other ways. Lots of them come in for schools and shopping and whatnot. And so I just wanted to say that hopefully I, I represented the city well in the Chamber of Commerce, and it really was a good chance for me to go back through in my own thinking and consider just how important agriculture is. And so if we have an opportunity, you know, some agribusinesses right inside our community, trans systems and all the different things that happen, the farmers come with their harvest and their trucks through our community at harvest time. Let's be mindful of, of really the benefit that agriculture is to us, and so that we in turn are good partners for them in any way that that might be. Thanks.
Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we, some of us attended the meeting on a, a new bridge in our community. It was a very positive meeting. However, the one hang-up that everyone got hung up on was how are we gonna pay for it? So in light of that, I would ask that our mayor and our president get together with the mayor and the president over in Grand Forks to draft a letter to all of our state and federal representatives, asking them to start looking for money to pay for this new south end bridge and get that ball rolling.
Great idea. Mr. Vedder. Mr. Pakchavinsky.
Thank you. Speaking of bridges, I would like to thank the crew that's working on the Kennedy Bridge, especially the construction manager. A few of us brought a concern forward from feedback we've gotten from motorists, that the bridge was too dark and not safe, and we contacted them, and they very quickly made the decision to, to add some lighting and reflective features, and they restripped the road, and it's much better. So I appreciate the, the quick, the quick response to that, and I know it wasn't something they wanted to do, because it, it disrupts their, their project, but it, it is something, I think, that was, that was necessary, and just wanted to thank them publicly for that. So that's all I got.
Riappel.
Being it's Thanksgiving week, I'd like to thank all the employees of East Grand Forks for your hard work over the past year.
Mr. Tweeten.
Thanksgiving is a very important day. It's one of the most important days of the year. We're giving thanks to God that we have the opportunity of living in the greatest democracy in the history of the world. One thing we want to remember, people aren't trying to leave the United States and get out of there. People are trying to get in. Many people are desperate, because they realize we're the land of opportunity, and we are the country that has enabled many parts of the world to lead a better life, and incidentally, eat plenty of that turkey, move the economy.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just would like to expand a little bit on Mr. Vedder's comments about the MPL executive board meeting last week. It would be true or factual that the needle of the actual nuts and bolts to how and when and where the bridge gets built didn't move very much, but the fact is that bridges are both literal and figurative, and I believe that the figurative side of that moved a lot that night, because, and for the reason that we got a lot of those stakeholders in the room together, and to some level, we agree that there's a necessary need for that local bridge. What we need to do from here out is start to tighten up those, you know, the nuts and bolts, like you said, get, start working on finance, all those types of things, but, but we also need to be cognizant and vigilant in making sure that we're constantly, constantly growing that relationship, making sure that people are aware, getting people in that room again. I would say that we need to do this more often, more frequently, where people can build those things. You can't build a bridge without trust, and, and, or trust us, I guess, so I think we, we're still in the, the trust building phase, but I think we took a huge step forward last week, so onward.
Mr. Grassl.
Nothing.
I also like to give thanks to all the staff and who was, got to, able to attend yesterday when we met out at the pump station, to recognize the efforts that we put in for the last, I mean, you can say it almost started nine years ago, to get to this point of having the interconnect with the City of Grand Forks. You know, talking about the bridges and talking about the interconnect and other things that we can work with Grand Forks on, I think this is a, a road that is, goes both ways. I think everybody is really appreciative of how things worked when we got, started the interconnect a couple of years ago, and now it's running. I, I think that's a testament of us working together and building, as Mr. Demers said, building that trust back and forth. I, I think it's to show everybody there's many things that we can do together. You know, you always hear that, and I say it a lot, we're, we're one community, and I think we need to keep that going forth and working together. And to Mike's point also on that bridge, I do appreciate them putting that on, the light on there and the striping on there. I went over there and had my daughter take a video when we were driving over it. I was not taking the video, my daughter was, so.
I hope.
And it was pretty dark, and we forwarded that video on just to give them proof, and they responded quickly to it, and I appreciate it. So it's another thing that, item that we're working on together, make our communities better, making that bridge better, making us being able to go back and forth. So I appreciate it, and look forward to many things in the future.
Mr. Murphy.
I only have one thing tonight. We did send out the, or we did receive the truth and taxation notices with the estimated tax impact, so if, like, take a look at that if you have any. So we're gonna have it on the work session agenda for next week. So if you have any questions, concerns, comments, like the vent or yell at staff, please contact Ms. Anderson or myself, and we'll see what we can get for you for next week.
Mr. Gullston.
On a less serious note, I'd like to thank Mr. Riappel for thanking the employees regarding the Thanksgiving.
Anything constructive?
That's it.
I'm just kidding.
Just as a follow-up, I guess, to the discussions or the, that we've had so far on the interconnect project, is, yeah, we did, as of about one o'clock last Thursday, November sixteenth, we did flip the switch and start sending water, or wastewater, to Grand Forks. So we've actually been up and running for about six days now. Everything seems to be working, I guess, as planned, designed. We are continuing at this point to get the security fencing up, our twenty-two acre equalization basin, as well as security fencing around the lift station site. Other than that, we'll just have some minor items that we're gonna nail into next spring that we just can't complete, you know, this fall here now, or this early winter, so. Other than that, like I said, everything is kinda working as planned, so. Anything from the department heads? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Vedder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. Meet as adjourned. David.
What's that? Actually, we're on the ground. Yeah. So you're the bird cutter, or am I the?